Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Work Sessions first, Albany City Council's work session on January tenth, twenty twenty-two at four P M. This is our very first work session of the year, so it's really wonderful to see all of you, and I hope you all had a memorable Christmas and a happy and joyous new year. I know the fireworks startled me awake at midnight. I hope everyone else had a chance to enjoy them. So thank you again for being here today. I'd like to call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor, Mayor Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Counselors Novak.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kopczynski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Gabe. Appreciate that. Happy New Year to you as well. And so business from the public, persons wanting to comment and or provide written material for the record must register to speak in the tax materials to the email presented in the agenda before noon in the day of the meeting. And I understand from staff that there were none submitted or no one signed up to speak to us this evening. So I'm going to go ahead and proceed with the agenda. We have a was Mr. Lawrence able to join us today?
He is not online yet.
Okay, can I come? I'll come back to that then. Will that be acceptable to you, Peter? That work? So what I'll do is we have a special presentation for Mr. Lawrence, and because he's not here yet, I'd like to postpone it till he gets here with his wife. And and then I'll interrupt and then read the presentation. So next on the agenda item would be amend Albany Municipal Code Title eighteen, Building Board of Appeals, Jonathan Balkema, pages three through eleven in your packet, and Mr. Jonathan, please take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thanks for taking the moment to chat with me today. So staff's bringing a recommendation to make some alterations to Title eighteen, section four, section fourteen, which is the Board of Appeals. Previously, you had heard from some customers and had shared some concern over the fourteen day window that we have in there to have a appeal be timely. And then, as you guys know, we are a state program, so often we get impacted by legislative changes and those sorts of things. There's been a couple since the last time we've done an update to the section that we needed to incorporate either way. So staff's recommending are some changes to make the chapter actually flow better for our users and then also to help try to get people to the right spots and get an answer as soon as they can for appeals. So if you go to your packet on page thirteen, I'm also sharing my screen and hopefully you can see that. What we looked at doing was one, address the timelines, which is actually at the bottom of the list, because they kind of went in the list, a order of changes. But basically, what we did was try to do a restructure a little bit and then breaking it up by the different categories of decisions that I end up rendering as part of my duties. And one of those is we have our normal Title eighteen stuff that ends up being local regulatory things such as demos and some of the stuff that previous council had adopted that we retained regulatory authority when the state determined they didn't have regulatory authority over it. And then we have the matters of the state, as you'll see in the draft, which are the true building codes that are published by the working building codes division. Those are set by the state. There's not anything that we as the city can do about those other than propose a code amendment during those amendment periods. Those are published by the state and part of state law. So we kind of broke it up in that way. So just kind of a reorganization a little bit in the section to make it a little clearer which areas we're talking about. And then with that relocation, we actually moved the creation of the board to the beginning of the document. And in that, I know we've had some challenges recently getting qualified members onto the board. One of the things we're proposing is actually clarifying what the requirements are for those people. And really, we're trying to capture stuff that you as council have already done in the past, which is often include registered design professionals having contractor representation, having experience equal to my position or better types of things. So we just codified those like you'll see when I get to the change marks for the actual text. One of the things we also included is something historically council has done is elected to have alternate members. So when there's a conflict of interest, we still have a full body to review stuff. One of the things that we did was look at the statutory directions that the legislature put in, and one of the big distinctions that they've changed in the last couple of years is the administrative provisions of the code. The state code is something that goes to the administration at B C D. It's not something that really is a technical element. So they separated those two. So we did similar in that context because we don't get to waive a code requirement necessarily, but we can't also waive a permit. State says you have to have a permit for something. There's not a way to waive that. So questions around appeals around not questions, appeals around a did I need a permit or not actually should go to B C D administration because they're the ones that have to interpret the state law. The next bullet that we have there is we clarified alternate methods would be something that would be subject to either of the Board of Appeals for the B C D chief. Just to make sure that was very clear how things would go and for that element, because in an alternate method, unlike the previous bullet where it's really set up for technical things go to the state, the alternate method is really more did they prove that it's scientifically an equal to and I may not have felt that way. Other people I've reached out to like fire, Albany Fire may not have felt that way, but again, using the board, the board may have said, no, they demonstrated that it was equal. So that allows them to retain either doing it locally or through the state's process itself. And then clarified that specific alternate methods related to middle housing. So this is one of the things that changed two legislative cycles ago. Basically, with the enactment this year, this year of our middle housing stuff, we also have to have a separate streamlined path for appeals for discretionary decisions related to specifically to conversions of single family housing into not more than four middle housing dwelling units. So we've added a section to comply with that version of it. And then clarifies the appeals to the border generally related to the Title eighteen, again, as we separated it out. So that way, there's sections depending on which area that we're doing the appeal for. And then, like I said, we did the change in the context of breaking it out for administrative and then discretionary matters. So one of the things that the codes was written around was really they were looking at the technical aspects of it, not the discretionary matters. Discretionary matters end up usually being more of an administrative function where we're looking at what the community resources are. So we end up talking to Albany Fire to find out if, you know, if an alternate method would be reasonable or in a discretionary call would be reasonable because it's next door to the fire station rather than at the far end of their service area and those sorts of things. So it ends up being more than is it just practical? It's a more of a policy type decision. So we we broke up and called out specifically discretionary matters. And the big change that you'll see in this area is discretionary matters and administrative matters that aren't related to the state building code would be directed to the community development director, who is my position. And then we work back from there. And then, like I said, in the clarification part, we did clarify that the administrative matters that we talked about would go to the building codes division. Discretionary matters go to the community development directors. And then this last bullet here, one of the things that we added, which is not needed right now, but it is a rule change that will affect this year. That basically says if for some reason my position ends up becoming a employment by contract, the board can still need to see the matters, but the building official from the county actually has to sit on the board at that point to oversee the technical merits. So as I mentioned at the beginning, one of the takeaways that we had from some of your guys' discussions in the past was the window of time. So we also looked at trying to make it so we streamline this process to get a I ideally, we just don't even get to appeals, but when we do get an appeal, it happens sooner. The people have a longer window to actually request an appeal. So the first major change we made in there was the original language that's currently adopted is a fourteen day window. Staff's proposing a thirty day window, which is consistent with the state's appeal process. The second bullet bullet here is also trying to streamline the process. Currently, we require a rather large window for notifying both parties of the actual meeting being set. So I believe it's ten days before I'm going to put it on the slide. I believe it's ten days. We're suggesting reducing it down to five. So that way, when the board's able to have a forum sooner, I can actually have them meet sooner because there were one time that we were actually looking at a date and the date was either too early or a lot later than what we wanted because people were going on vacations or something like that. So it ended up being and it ended up delaying this person's appeal just strictly because of that notification period that we had to have. The second one, again, trying to get these resolved sooner than that is changing the timeframe that the board has to render a decision. So the current language says it has to be rendered within sixty days. Staff's proposing reducing that down to forty-five days. So that way, again, we get the needed clarification from the board within time, within a quicker timeframe to get the projects moving along. And then the final one, similar to what we did with the initial appeal. So when it is a matter of the Title eighteen of the state building code, the appeals would end up going to you as the appeals body for the appeals board. So the suggestion would be to extend that from the fourteen days to thirty days also. So that way, we have a bigger window. They can look into matters and then appeal if. So I'll pause for a second. I have questions before I look at the track changes really quick for you.
Counselors, anyone have, thank you, Jonathan. Any may have questions?
I don't know if I'm still there or not. I don't see anybody on the screen, including myself.
Counselor Olson, we can hear you loud and clear and see you.
You can see me?
That's correct. We can see you and hear you.
Well, something happened to my screen, I guess. I don't see anybody. A leader in the two oh twenty-one Gartner magic quadrant for meeting solutions is what I see on the screen. So I don't know how to. I've tried to get back to the meeting, but I haven't had any luck.
I think he has to get rid of his sharing first.
Get rid of who?
No, Counselor Olson, are you on your laptop?
I am.
Okay. So go down to the the Mac OS dock and look for the Zoom icon, which is a blue square with a white camera icon. And click on the, click on that.
Okay, I did.
Are you back in the meeting?
No.
Do you see? You don't see the?
I have another square that says bolt and then getting started with Zoom, how to join a meeting. To the left of that, it says launch meeting. Camera is not working. But you see me, you say.
We see you. Yeah. You can try to go out and get back in. That might be the easiest thing to do.
Okay. Well, I'll be gone for a while, maybe.
Oh, you got in just fine the first time.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to close out of other things too before you come back in.
I did.
Okay.
So if you do not see a dialogue launch meeting below, there's launch meeting and I
But you're still in the meeting.
Okay. Here, Counselor Olson. We can all hear you.
Well, I don't see any place to. No, I went away.
Can you?
No. We can hear you loud and clear and see.
I'll see you.
You can see me and hear me, but I can't.
Yeah.
I can't do anything with you.
Do you want me to temporarily stop sharing?
Yeah, that that might help.
Hey, there you go. I canceled you, but you know, you show up.
Okay.
Oh, man.
Thanks, Jonathan.
No problem.
I never saw the sharing. Counselor Johnson, you have a question?
Yes, I not so much a question, but I wanted to thank Jonathan. I mean, this is really detailed and trying to go through it. Tell you what, you and staff have really done a good job. And I guess my one question is, does this basically streamline it and make it easier for the customer?
So that was the intent that we did. So basically, the the thought behind it is and the redirecting people to the appropriate people is trying to get this done in a in a matter of days ideally than you know, the weeks that a normal appeal will. And just so you know, this isn't a huge problem. We've only had one appeal since I've been here and I've been here almost four years now. And we've had what? Two asks for appeal and we've had to say it was untimely based on the timeframe. Because generally what we do as staff is if it's a state building code thing, we have already reached out or we reach out for them on their behalf to the state and get their opinion because I'm obligated to follow whatever the state tells me is the direction they want me to follow. So it's that that's kind of the way we're asking to in the language to go towards is to streamline it because B C D staff usually gets back within a matter of days where I can't even hold the meeting for five days.
Okay, great. I appreciate that because like I said, it was it's very detailed and I like the idea of really spelling it out, you know, who they need to go to for an appeal and they can always ask, you know, you and staff where, you know, where to go. And so I think that's a help, but no, I think it looks good to me. Thank you for it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novak was next. Afterwards.
Thank you. I am just recalling when we had a couple of individuals before us last year who I I believe they came to the appeals board. The one lady was wanting to use her home for a preschool or something and and she had she had to go to lawyer and she was asking for something. The the state said it needed to be equal or they could that the the city could provide would could allow something comparable. And I I'm just, I I I know there's a lot of detail here. I just want to confirm that this is going to make life easier for people who are just trying to survive and do business, right? Small business people like that woman who was before us and there's somebody else with a wanting to do, I think, a hair salon or something out of a home and they had a lot of difficulty. This these changes that you've made here, these are going to make it easier for people who've come before us in the past with, you know, asking for help and asking, this is going to help them?
This streamlines the process to get the answer that they're ultimately seeking. It won't necessarily, you know, it would be false hope to say it helps them. It gets them to the answer that unfortunately ends up being the end answer. So if it's a matter of the state and the state says you have to paint your house purple, which we don't get enough color, you have to paint the house purple. There's there's not a huge path to do that. The board can't change what the state requires. You know, that's one of the things that they're limited on. So it really just clarifies if it's a matter of the state, you really go to the state instead of a false hope. Because the sad thing is, even if we came to a local board on a state matter, I have to listen to what the state says. So if the state says you got to paint it purple, that's what I have to testify when we're representing in front of the board. That's what that follows. So it's one of those trying to get that answer as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay, so mostly then my understanding today is that it has to do with timeframes that rather than a fourteen day window to appeal, they now have a thirty day window to appeal and decisions are rendered rather than in sixty days in forty-five days. Is that mostly the main point of what the changes you've made?
That's the that's the big changes for timelines. And then, like I said, we clarified the who goes to do what the for administrative stuff, the did we follow the state law portion of it? That really goes to B C D. They're the ones that interpret that that element of it because of the state program that we just assume the role of. And then matters that are local but administrative, it goes to Matthew Rutgers, the community development director to interpret, did we do it correctly or do we need stuff? So that way, each step of the way, there is a clearly defined person or entity that double checks we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Okay, one more quick question along these lines, just to try to get this straight in my head. If a person on the local level is trying to do something that involves building codes and the state says X, Y, or Z, so then the city is bound by whatever the state says, if I'm understanding you correctly. It's like you can go to the city, but the city's going to say, well, the state says this. So don't cities, cities have no recourse in terms of appeal? Does this individual then go to the state to appeal something?
Correct. So when it's a part of the building code and you follow the statutory option, basically, it goes to the program chief, which is how we have our setup in the proposed language. So it goes to the program chief, which is
And that's.
ultimately, no, that that is the state's program chief. So they the state program chief. So they would look at what we had made the decision on. And generally, we've already reached out to the state program chief by that point in time anyway to see if we were missing the mark because one of the things that we do is our code books all come, we have to buy them separately, but all come with a commentary that comes with it to tell you the intent of the code. We read that. We look up those elements before we make those types of decisions. And when it's questionable or gray, often we reach out to our counterparts in other jurisdictions or the state. So they would, if they didn't like my answer, they could then reach out to the program chief. And generally, it doesn't even have to go through a appeals process almost exclusively. People just email the chief. The chief tells them, well, this is how I'd look at it, or they would come back and say you could look at it this way. Have you considered this? And then we'd have that dialogue and then go forth. If they did do an official appeals appeals through the program chief, there that chief can still be a chief's decision can still be appealed to the structures board for that specific program. So it could be the plumbing board of appeals or plumbing board would look at an appeal if they didn't like what the plumbing chief said. So there's still that extra step of appeal just in case, if if they wanted to do that.
Forgive me, I just one, one further question and I need some water. So if a person locally has a situation, I just am trying to understand this. They they really, they can go to you, but so locally, we don't have any power in Albany to make decisions affecting Albany. Does it? It all comes from the state and we just abide by the state? Is there no? Is there no room for cities to to do what they think is best for their particular city? I I thought we were like some kind of, I'm going to get a review of this on Saturday, I'm sure, and I appreciate that I am. But I thought cities had a little more power in this state.
So we we operate a state program that we chose to delegate or they chose to delegate the authority to us. We assume those responsibilities. So under that power, we have flexibility in allowing alternate methods. We have flexibility in slight interpretations, but we still have to follow the basic requirements of the code. We still have to implement those basic requirements. We can't say, you know, we'll we'll use, you know, your your side of the profession. The code says you have to have a hood in your kitchen. Nope, you don't have that. You know, we don't have those types of flex. The part we can say is the code said ten feet, ten and a half feet seems reasonable, you know.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
You use some words so that I can appreciate allowing alternative methods because I recall that did come up in the past. So that's where the city does have some, some
Right.
authority.
Discretion.
Yes, thank you. Discretion discretion is a good word.
So thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Olson.
Yes. My question was pretty much what Counselor Novak was asking. And I guess I would go on beyond that and and ask people, well, let me say this first, that in a new building, I am totally in favor of sprinklers. So if there are any fires, it'll put the fire out and lives will be saved. But in an existing building where other things other than sprinklers have been satisfactory in the past and somebody wants to, buys the building, wants to occupy it with the essentially the same use. And now the city comes and says, you have to install sprinklers in all over this building. It makes it essentially not feasible for the person to occupy that building and do it. And they appeal. Do they appeal to you or do they appeal to the state?
So u- under the proposed language, they would, it depends on the situation. So Albany Fire does have some authority to ask for sprinklers in a change of use and those sorts of things. So that would be a separate subject matter. But if it was using the example Counselor Novak had mentioned where the state law had changed and required sprinklers in new childcare facilities, that would be a matter of the state because it's part of the state code and they would go to the state, which they did in that particular case. And unfortunately, at that point in life, they wanted counsel to try to change what state law it was, which we're not able to, unfortunately.
So is that a building that existed or is that a building that's under construction?
It it was a gray area on how you want to look at it. It was constructed, but it hadn't had it finally yet at that point in time.
So if the building had been.
In the process.
If the building had been there for 20, 30 years. And was considered satisfactory on a fairly recent basis. Would you still mandate that they had to tear into the building and put in sprinklers?
So and and they wouldn't have necessarily had to tear into the building because you can put sprinklers in not going into caverns. If you wanted to, but if if the building code required that they would be required to do it in that particular instance. The building code required that sprinklers be installed in a building with the new use of a childcare facility. So they would have had to do that or provide some alternative.
Well, I understand the rules to be that you require sprinklers or. Do you have the alternative of doing something else if it is considered a reasonably safe thing to do? Consider reasonably the safe thing to do. So. So they they are appropriate to appeal to somebody and I guess that's the Building Board of Appeals. And can they appeal to the council beyond that if they don't like what the Building Board of Appeals has to say about it?
So if it's a matter of the state, so a building code related stuff, even if they use the appeals board, it would end up going to the. State's board at that point in time. So that's that's the.
So the city council is completely divorced from this Board of Appeals. Then correct?
You you could, you are the appeals body for the Board of Appeals for matters of Title 18 that is not related to.
That is not what I'm sorry, Mr. Baltimore. I sometimes lose the end of your sentence. I also lost the end of your sentences during your presentation. Forgive me for jumping in, but I'm I'm losing important information for you.
So if it's related to the physical building code, the way the statutory structure is intended was that the appeal to. Anything that a local board does is supposed to go through the Structures Board as they're referred to for the state of Oregon. So that that they're the ultimate authority over the building code in the context of those sorts of things.
So one time you say yes, and now you say no, the city council cannot be involved in in these decisions.
Counselor Olson, what I had, now what I had said was matters of Title 18. So that would be my declarations of a building being. Dangerous, the demolitions, the other matters that are locally adopted that aren't part of the state building codes, those would still be appealable to. Through the Board of Appeals first and then ultimately through you guys if they didn't like the answer.
Well, I'm still confused. But another question I have is. The the in the printed. Document stuff that's in red, is that stuff that you've added?
And so that.
You don't define what the blue means or what the red means or what the crossed out means.
So the crossed out means that it's a removed language. Any of the other colors, whether it's. Red or somewhat purpley type color or the blue, those just mean those are additional language within that area. So anything that's just underlined. Is in addition to that section, anything that's crossed out is a removal from that.
Okay, so in section. Eighteen dot fourteen dot zero zero five. Number one, number A. You say members shall include a minimum of one registered design professional. One residential contractor and one commercial contractor and two at large members. So we have three out of five members. Who are involved either in design or in the building. Is that correct?
So the way.
And this is in addition to our present way of filling out this committee. Is that correct?
That that so this is exactly how the committee is currently made up. We actually have two registered design professionals, a third that is an alternate. And then we have a residential remodeler contractor. I believe one that's specializing in all commercial at the moment. And then one at large. So.
Oh, these are new rules. These are new rules.
These are not new rules. We just tried to capture what was actually already in practice because.
They've been here in the past?
We had no.
Why are they here in red then?
We had no defined language in the municipal code on what the membership actually was supposed to entail.
Okay, so these are new rules. These are new rules then.
These are codifying.
Okay, so if I'm a contractor, am I going to go against what the building official has ruled? I doubt it very much. And if I'm an architect or a design person, I doubt that I'm going to go against what the. What the city building official has decreed. I think this is like having a jury. Where 60% of the jury are law enforcement people. And I I'm sure the law enforcers are going to be tickled to death with that. So I I don't, I don't think this is a good idea at all.
So excuse me, Peter.
I think I'll vote against this, so these changes.
The city manager wants to jump in real quick. The council also give me a second.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I think we're we're diverging on a on on something here. I would ask counselors to remember that this is the state building code. So there are communities around the state that don't do what we do. And what you have to do if you're building a house or a structure there is you've got to go to the state for these services.
Okay, so is the state insisting we stop the jury?
No, no, this is not stacking a jury.
Well, it looks like it to me when 60% of them are building people.
That all, you know, if 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 the building official is charged with interpreting the building code, the state's building code. There should be a way that a builder, a contractor can come to a board and say, hey, we disagree with the building officials interpretation. We'd like to appeal this. So then then this group of of people who you can understand need to have that specialized knowledge. Resident on their on their board consider it and they look at that and say whether or not there's a reason for for appealing or agreeing with the appeal. So but again, this is, we're talking about the appeal process. Counselor Novak had asked earlier if this makes it easier for an applicant to get what they need. This doesn't change the building code. This changes codifies the building, the building appeal process.
That's exactly right. That's why I object to this.
Yeah, I I and Counselor Olson, I I do you object to a in a building appeal or do you object to the makeup of who's?
I object to having 60% of the people on the jury being people who will be. Very reluctant to disagree with the building official.
Well, it's not a question of agreeing or disagreeing. It's a question of saying whether the the interpretation was consistent with what the building code says.
That's exactly right. And that's why I object.
Well, so you need to have people who understand the building code, which is the reason why that.
The way the way it is.
Yeah.
I I just, I don't agree with that.
Well, so Counselor Olson, I I understand you disagree with it, but my thought is if someone's going to review building code. On a building, I'm building for a family or for a school or for a manufacturer. I want somebody that understands the code. So we keep people safe. That's the most important thing. This process is going to streamline that process and make it easier for them to get to the right appeal body.
Yeah, it streamlines us right out of the process.
So Counselor Novak, your hand is still up. I'm going to go to other folks.
I just raised it again. I lowered it and raised it again.
Good. Well, Counselor Smith is next and then Counsel Matthew Rutgers, Community Development Director, and then Counselor Novak.
I don't have anything substantive to add. I I believe the city manager covered what I was going to say. I was I was simply going to say that. The this is a matter of appealing local decisions of building code, state building code. Issues to the state and deciding. The building officials determination of municipal code. Matters in Title 18 to that can be appealed to the city council. We make the code, we decide the appeal. That that was all I was going to say.
Thank you. Director Rutgers.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Mayor and Council. I I was just going to add, and and Jonathan had already kind of stated this and just I can speak from my personal experience here. Since I've been at the city about five years. The Building Board of Appeals has been only used once since I've been here. So it it's used not very often and. And in fact, the the not necessarily here, but in in a previous jurisdiction that I worked in, the only time I can remember that it was actually used there. It was the the person appealing is typically an architect, a design professional or contractor. Not necessarily a a private citizen, but again, they're they're not used very often, as Jonathan indicated. We really strive to work with folks to to not have things go to an appeals board. We we hope that we can get things settled out with without the need to do that, but just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Matthew. Are you done? Counselor was next.
Yes, thank you. I I agree, and it does make sense to me that we should have at least one individual on the board who specializes in things that knows. What those codes mean, whether that's a contractor, an architect, whatever. I think it it makes sense to have someone there. And I just wanted to say, because I think either I I wasn't very clear or our city manager misunderstood me. I was not asking a question to make make it so that the individual who appeal, the individuals who appeal get what they want. My question and and what I was asking. Because I understand this is this is, it's about appeals. It's not about getting what you want. It's about having an opportunity to appeal. And my concern was that an individual on the local level have an opportunity to appeal locally. I know these are state matters. That's what I was asking about. I'm not asking, I'm not in any way asking, does this make it so that when people. Make an appeal, we give them what they appeal for. That's that that was not, if that's what you thought I said, that's not what I meant to say at all. I, okay, I hope that's clear. I don't know, but I hope so. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Novak. Counselor Olson.
Yeah, I want to say that the majority of comments that I've gotten from my constituents have been complaints about this. Business of being strong armed by the building inspector. And we, the council, don't hear the complaints. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Pete, do you want to comment on that or?
On the Counselor Olson's note, you know, we can. Matthew Rutgers got his hand up and he may be planning to comment on it, but I would just say that, yeah, I. You know, the one of the big tough things here is to understand that this is not our building code. It's. It's the state's building code and we're just doing it for them. So as much as. You know, as much as that is painful to think that we have a very limited control over. Over the interpretation and the administration of that code, it is what it is. And 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 I think what you see is a lot of frustration on the part of. Applicants and 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 builders and others that run afoul of those decisions. So I I I certainly understand that.
Yeah, and I'll say back to that.
So can I can I acknowledge you first, Counselor Olson? Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll say back to that, that. The people that complained don't complain about the code. They complain about the interpretation of the code. By our building official.
Thank you. Thank you. So counsel, what would you like to do with this? Would you like to give them a thumbs up to move forward or would you like to come back on Wednesday and bring more? Counselors, Counselor Smith was first.
I was just going to say this is coming back on Wednesday. It's on the Wednesday agenda.
I I want to give them thumbs up to let know.
Yep. Fine with me.
Counselor Olson.
I wanted to make that same point. We shouldn't be making decisions at these. So called study sessions.
We weren't making decisions. I was saying it does have to come back to us on Wednesday. That's all I was saying. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jonathan, for your presentation. Go watch football if you like football. All right, thanks, sir. All right. Natural is licensed to occupy right away. Venetian Theater, Gordon Stephens Meyer on page 12 through 18. Give me for just a second. Counselor brought down. You got something?
Um, yes, I was just wondering if if there's a conflict, if I am, if I'm personal friends with the the people that. Are asking for the appeal.
Sean, Council Attorney.
It would, if you're personal friends to the people asking for the for the appeal, then Counselor, I would probably recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
I mean, it's not a it's not a conflict of interest that could be perceived as bias, though.
Yeah, okay, that's why I was, it was a kind of a gray area. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So was that as far as the license to occupy or the previous matter? I can't hear you.
Licensed to occupy.
Okay, so probably so you're going to recuse yourself?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Licensed to occupy right away. Venetian Theater, Gordon Stephens Meyer, page 12 through 18. Please, Mr. Stephens Meyer, take the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor. And this is Stacy Phil Castro, and I was going to go ahead and give the staff report for this item.
Please proceed.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and counselors. So staff is making a recommendation that council make a motion to approve the Grove Church's. Request for a license to occupy public right of way. Approving this license will allow. Removal of an existing door and replacement with an outward swinging door that would be used for emergency access. So the Grove Church, they occupy, they own actually the building that. I know, and I think is more commonly known as the Venetian Theater or Blythe Theater. It's located in Albany's Historic District on the corner of Broad Alvin and First Avenue. So the existing door isn't safe. It only is accessible to people that are on the mezzanine or I think. A mezzanine is also a balcony. Approving this license would allow the property owners to make the modification and replace it with an emergency. Exit door that could serve the entire building. They're proposing to install planters on either side of the door. This is to prevent people using the sidewalk from accidentally. Running into the door should it be swinging open when they're passing by. Council may remember, but about 10 years ago, we brought a similar license request. This was from Gambaretti's Italian Restaurant. And the restaurant is located on the same block, actually, almost practically next door to the Venetian Theater. This modification has been reviewed and approved by Landmarks Commission. Engineering staff has reviewed the. Sorry, reviewed the proposed modification and we don't have any concerns with it. The draft license document, which would be executed, should council make a motion to approve this request, it is included as an attachment. The document was developed by the city attorney. It includes hold harmless and indemnification language to protect the city. And there's also language in there that would require the property owners to maintain or even remove the encroachment. Should we have a, the city have any reason to make that request? So in conclusion, staff is recommending council make a motion to approve the Grove Church's request for a license to occupy public right of way. In order to construct an emergency exit door. And I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Also, thank you very much, Stacy. Have council have any questions? So Counselor Johnson.
Yes, Stacy, thank you. For I'm just glancing at it right now. I I I've read it and stuff and it says the sidewalk's 11 foot wide. And so this will be very visible and I just want, it's not close to any of our. you know, established benches or anything, so that, that's gonna be, I don't know what you'd call it, or you don't want both at the same place.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. That's, that's one of the things that staff reviewed. We want to maintain a minimum four-foot-wide corridor. That's, that's required to meet ADA standards. And so the, I think there's like a, probably, I think, I don't know, I don't have the exhibit open, but I think it's like at least five and a half to six feet that would be clear, even with the proposed improvements. And, and we looked at that, there's a tree, there's like a bike rack, and there's a bench. So we looked at all of that.
Yeah, because I was thinking you were talking about 10 years ago with the other business. I think we did one on, it's either lions or elsewhere. I can't remember which one, but where the door swung out and we helped protect that. And so this is actually something that will protect the public from, you know, crash. So I, I, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Any other counselors have any comments or questions for this engineer? Counselor Olson.
I'm wondering if this is adequately lighted at night, so people walking along will see these three-foot barriers at night.
Um, you know, I, we didn't review it for lighting, but I know that the street does have the street lighting that was installed when First Avenue was improved. And, and I believe the business is fairly, fairly well-lit.
And I, I don't know if I need more permission.
Go ahead.
How does the tree interact with the streetlight? And I know our tree people will cut anything down that's bigger than about three inches in diameter, so it probably isn't a problem. But I'm wanting a combination of tree, streetlight, and three-foot-high barriers or something that is, I guess we can wait until somebody stumbles or discuss whether it's a problem or not.
Yeah, there'll be none, the, no tree, the tree won't be removed. That's not in the proposal, and none of the street furniture or lighting needs to be modified for this, this improvement. And the, the planter that there's proposing is similar that, to what was constructed at Gambaretti's Restaurant. It's, I think, a 36-inch-tall brick planter that will have some sort of plantings in it. So it should be substantial enough to be very visible. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Johnson, your hand still up? Do you have any more?
Sorry.
Okay.
Bummer.
Counsel, would you like him to bring this back, bring, so city ma, city attorney engineer to bring this back to us on Wednesday? We got thumbs up. Thank you very much, Stacy. Is Mr., is our guest here, Mr. Lawrence?
No, he is not in attendance.
We did send this letter. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Smith.
I'll contact Mr. Lawrence after the meeting and make sure that he's set up for Wednesday.
Okay, I did, I did sign this letter, and I think we posted a mail to him, but we, we wanted to read it to him. Okay, so Wednesday'd be great. I'd really appreciate that. Next one, system development charges residential evaluation by Rob Edmonds, pages nineteen to twenty-five of your packet.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. This agenda item should be pretty quick. There's not a, a big presentation. Rather, we're seeking direction on whether we should move forward with the SDC evaluation for small homes. Let me give you some background before I ask for that direction. At the December thirteenth council work session, we presented options to modify SDCs to accommodate smaller homes. Basically, SDCs could be modified to provide a reduced fee for small homes with the corresponding increase for larger homes, all, all based upon their impact to their respective systems. So, so at the end of that meeting, end of the December thirteenth work session, staff asked for direction whether to move forward with that work. And council asked before we do that to come back and present what that next phase would cost. So we have done that. We've talked to Deb Galardi, our consultant, and the cost to complete that next phase is just over $25,000. I think it's $25,230. So just quickly, so what that next phase is, what that's gonna fund is continued data gathering and data. Analyze that data and complete the options that we presented at the last meeting. Then all that information will come back to council at a future work session. We can discuss that and, and, and talk about what, what those proposed fees would be. So, so my question to council is, do you, would you like us to move forward with that next phase?
Counsel, thank you very much, counsel. Counselor Novak is first up, and...
So I have a question. When I was reviewing this and reviewing the costs, and forgive me, I just, I was wondering, we have to go to outside people. This is nothing that staff can take a look at and review and figure out. We have to go to the Galardi Group or other consultants and have them do this at the expense that's been listed. I'm, I'm just asking, because I was kind of shocked at the sticker on that to get that information. I, I, I was hoping staff could, like, somebody on staff or a group of staff individuals who are already being paid could take a look at all this and analyze it, rather than going to an outside group and paying a, what to me seems like a significant amount of money, whether you have it in the budget or not. It's like we could put that money towards something else. I was just surprised at how things work.
Yeah, but that, that, that's a great question. We, that's kind of our first option is to keep a lot of that work in-house as much as we can. But unfortunately, with, with SDCs, it's a pretty specialized knowledge base, and we, and we don't have that in, in-house. So that's when we turn to, to Deb Galardi, especially to interpret some of the state, state statutes regarding SDCs. We want to make sure that we are kind of following the letters of the law in that, in that regard.
A follow-up to that, like, what happens if staff looks at it? And, I mean, why wouldn't you be following the letter of the law? I don't understand where that's even at issue. Of course, you're gonna follow the letter of the law. Why, again, is it that we have to go outside? Forgive me, I...
No, that's a good question. It's just, it's the expertise of, of evaluating the data that we have. So it's building permit data, it's water use data, and, and, and creating the link between the impact of a home to, to those, to that water usage. So it's, it's, it's really a, it's a pretty specialized area of knowledge that, that, that staff does not, does not have.
Okay, so the only way to move forward is with outside assistance from these people who have the specialized knowledge. So, and that comes with a price tag, and otherwise, there's no way to, to, I mean, there's, so we can't determine how much this would help increase housing by decreasing the degree of SDC on a smaller home from a larger home. Oh, this is hard for me, just the way things work. I, I really, I appreciate what you're saying, and I know you're being straight as you can be. I just, I'm at a loss when it comes to the workings of government on every level, and I, I'll, I'll be honest with you about that, because to me, I mean, it's like what I said earlier, where I understand why we need people who understand codes and, and legislation and, and, you know, I, I, I understand the need for specialized knowledge. I just, I just don't understand the grand overall scheme of things with why things are the way they are. But that's a discussion for another time. I've taken up enough time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Novak. Counselor Smith, and then let's go, Counselor, excuse me, Director Bailey, and then Counselor Olson.
I think this is a good example of staffing for what we do every day and hiring professional help for something that happens now and then. I know how to take vitamins and eat right and exercise, but I can't set a compound fracture on my own. I can't do heart surgery on myself. I hire professionals to do that, because I know they will do it right. And we do that, we take care of our rolling stock and our valves and our pipes and are patrolling our streets and making sure those things happen day after day after day, 24/7, when we need to set, to do, look into a special project like this with complex math, and we don't staff for that. We staff for the everyday. So this is a good example of how we have to hire professional help when we have a special project.
And it'll take that a little bit further, if somebody has hired over 1,000 people in the last 20 years. This project would take so much time from the staff that we do have that other things will fall by the wayside. So we definitely bring in those professionals to do that kind of work for us. Counselor, put your hand down, Counselor Novak, please. Thank you. Let's go with Director Bailey, and then Counselor Olson will be next, after her.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'll be quick. I just, I want to second what Counselor Smith and the mayor have said, but also, you know, staff is doing as much work as we can to try to manage those costs and do as much work in-house as we can. Things like, you know, pulling the reports on the permit data and pulling the reports from the utility billing software and those, that sort of work, we're, we do in-house and then send it to the consultant. And part of the risk of doing it in-house ourselves, as Rob was mentioning, is you can set an illegal SDC. That is something you can do, and we don't want to do that. So making sure that the SDC methodology that derives a dollar value that you'll be voting on, that methodology has to be legally sound. And so that is the work that Deb Galardi and consultants like her are doing. So as much as we can, and we're gathering the data and giving it to them, you know, ourselves, but compiling the methodology and, and then getting to the dollar amount that we want to present to you is, is really specialized work. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Director. Counselor Olson was next.
Oh, yes. I'm wondering if, if we were to institute a trailer court, and I know we don't, haven't done that for a long time. Do we have rules and regulations as how to charge SDCs to a trailer court?
We, we, we do those, those rules on how SDCs are charged to specific types of residential development are already, are already established. So we're, we're not looking to change how all those are, 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 all the types of development are charged, rather we're looking at, at the specific fee for those already existing types of development.
Thank you. I, I would assume that SDCs for a group of small, fairly temporary houses would be very similar to what we would charge to a trailer court, but I'm probably wrong.
Thank you, Rob, Director Bailey, officers. So we're gonna see them on Wednesday, correct? Would you like to go back on Wednesday? Thumbs up, please?
No, we're looking, actually, just kind of a, if it's allowed, kind of a head nod, so we can continue the work. You know, with, with that, then we'll, we'll continue on, and we'll bring back things in the future.
Try John, please. Try John.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our municipal court judge, annual report with Judge Reed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy New Year, Judge.
Thank you, and you folks as well. I've written up a brief report. I don't know if you folks have received it, but if not, what I'll do is just quickly read it to you. It shouldn't take long, and let me know if you have any questions at the end, please. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, sir. So this is my municipal judge's annual report to the council. Beginning in the second half of 2021, we began a new procedure of holding court five days per week, generally Monday through Friday. Generally, our arrangements begin at 8:30 a.m., and traffic trials generally begin at 8:15 a.m. This change to daily court has been well-received by the public. We have completed our first full year of the Albany Municipal Mental Health Court. To date, 48 people have been admitted since the start of the program. Fifteen are currently participating, 23 have graduated, nine were removed from our program, sent back to regular court, and one person passed away while in the program. Our mental health court has been well-received. I believe we have helped to reduce local homelessness. We provide focused mental health treatment to the Lynn County Mental Health Department, and we, we've reduced offender recidivism. In fact, Mayor Johnson stopped by and observed the Albany Municipal Mental Health Court in session. I'm sure he would provide you with any thoughts if you so desired. We are interviewing defense attorneys to seek one individual who will provide all indigent defense services to the municipal court. We believe this model will provide more efficient city services, be cost-neutral, or perhaps save money for the city in comparison to the current practice, and provide well-qualified indigent criminal defense representation. We hope to bring up the post-contract to the council at the end of this month. We in the court are extremely thankful to have Vern Jackson, the City Hall Security Officer, working with us. Thank you for providing this service. And lastly, September Ridgeway, our court supervisor, does an outstanding job of supervising, supervising the staff and running an efficient department. The judicial clerks are extremely knowledgeable of our court procedures and compassionate in answering questions from the public. Our court clerks certainly provide a good interface between the public and our municipal court. I thank you for allowing me to serve as your Albany Municipal Court Judge. Are there any questions?
So, counsel, thank you, thank you very much, Judge. Counselor Johnson.
Okay, yes. Um, thank you, Judge Reed. I noticed that the traffic violations, non-traffic, especially the traffic violations, have really gone down. The, the reason be because we have less officers on, you know, on, on the street, or you can, do you know why?
I don't know.
Because they're out there.
And I, I, I don't know why. We have September Ridgeway also online, our court supervisor. She's able to answer any questions, but that's what we receive. We process every case we receive that's been cited into our court. I don't know what's happening on that front end there, but those are what the numbers indicate.
Okay, yeah. And, and I really want to applaud you for thinking outside the box. That mental health court, it's kind of like the drug court that they do across the street. They serve a great service, and it, I think it helps people get to where, you know, at least give them that help up, or at least help forward, you know. They're gonna relapse, you know, there's no doubt about that and, and whatever. But I really applaud you for, for doing that, because, you know, anything we can do, you know, these people have nowhere to go, so at least they have some support with the court. So thank you.
Well, and it's not just me. I mean, we got a great staff, and we've really, I, I can't say enough for how Lynn County Mental Health Department has really stepped up and is helping us. So we appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brofow, you was next.
I just wanted to ask if you could describe what a typical process for a, in the mental health court would be, so that we could experience it a little bit like Mayor Johnson did.
Certainly. It's just such a great program. I just, I, I really love it. And I'll distinguish it a little bit about, so when I used to be a practicing attorney and did a lot of practice in the Lynn County Circuit Court across the street, we tried to start a mental health court, and the district attorney was required, the only way they were gonna buy into it was saying, first off, the person would have to come in and plead guilty to the charge. And that charge, they go in, they say they're guilty, and then they would be involved in a program for about two years. And if they complied with the program, then the case may be dismissed against them. And if they complied with the program, then the case may be dismissed against them. No guarantee, but maybe. The real distinction, and, and that program ended, ended after a year or two. It just fizzled. Because none of the defendants wanted to be involved in it. They did not want to put the time into it that is required of them to be successful in Lynn County or in mental health court. What we've done, and, and I'm thankful that we've got everybody to buy in, the, the police chief has bought in on, the city attorney's office bought into it. The real distinction here is that when people come before us on the initial arraignment, if I have an indication that they may qualify, they may have some mental health issues that are very instrumental in perhaps causing them to do this criminal activity, I have the authority now to authorize them and to get them into mental health court. Or we can, we're sometimes at advanced notice. We receive that somebody will be coming in to see us. Lynn County Mental Health may say that they are currently a client with them and they'd like them to get involved in mental health court. So to answer your question, Counselor Bartholomew, what will happen? Somebody will come in for arraignment, usually with us like at nine thirty AM on a Tuesday or Thursday or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. And I'll get an incline that they might be appropriate for it. And then I will outline the procedure of mental health court. And I will let them know that, that what they're going to really need to do is we have them sign a release agreement. They walk immediately over to Lynn County Mental Health and set up for an interview with them or an assessment. They will then report back to us in about three to four weeks. We, the Lynn County Mental Health, or I'm sorry, the Albany Municipal Mental Health Court meets monthly. They will come back in and during that time, they've met and assessed with Lynn County, or with Lynn County Mental Health. And the requirement is, is that they just go through and meet with Lynn County Mental Health Department. It could be anywhere from a three-month period all the way up to a one-year period. And they need to comply with all of those requirements. Meet, sometimes it's weekly basis, sometimes it's a monthly basis. The drug and alcohol issues are not really incorporated into this court as much. We are now also exploring another court, going to be called the Community Court. And there, we're going to see perhaps if we can get some more involvement with providing drug and alcohol treatment for some of these people. So again, this is focused just mostly on mental health treatment. So they will come back in, report to me, and this one, Mayor Johnson came in. He was able to hear people come up, talk to us. I asked them how they're doing. I'm very supportive of them, really encouraging of them, because a lot of these people, their involvement with court has always been where the judge has been mean and prosecutors have been mean and everybody's been after them. And they've really just bucked the system. Now though, we're trying to change that and they'll give me glowing reports. And I can't tell you, some of the people who I've known for the last twenty years, just through the system, and I can think of two right now, who have just made huge turnarounds, huge life turnarounds. Eventually, they will, and I'll receive a report from Lynn County Mental Health before we go through these monthly meetings on each client. And they will advise us to whether to continue it for a month or two or three, and then we'll continue it out. And eventually, as long as they comply, Lynn County Mental Health says, yes, we think they've used all of their services. We will then provide them with a certificate, a graduation certificate, which is signed by me as well as the Lynn County Mental Health Department. And then their case is dismissed. Now, keep in mind, these are not the largest cases in the world. You know, they might be a shoplifting case or a person who is continuing to trespass. And, you know, just being sometimes a pest to the city. I think Mayor Johnson saw the one person who's been a pest to the city for the last twenty years on his trespassing charges. Homeless, down on his luck, and we, well, we didn't do it. The Lynn County Mental Health Department did because of his involvement with our court, got him into housing. He's involved in treatment. He's no longer doing little petty crimes and life is good for him. And I always tell them that as long as they comply, the case will be dismissed. It's all up to them. You'll see in here, we've mentioned that nine people did not comply. Nine people just dropped out or didn't want to be involved in the program. We don't dismiss their case. They come back in and run through the general program without doing the mental health component. So I'm real happy with it. And it's, it's really, it's not costing us any money, not a bit. There's no money at all. I am meeting next week with the state who is going to be reviewing our program down here with the Lynn County Mental Health Department as well as the presiding judge up at Lynn County Circuit Court and Chief Herndon. We're meeting and there's a possibility that we'll be able to receive a grant or the Lynn County Mental Health Department can receive a grant even to expand our services that we're providing or that they're providing to us. But again, it is not costing us a thing. In fact, it's helping and I'm not seeing a lot of these clients back in in front of us. So I'm real happy with it.
So thank you, Judge. One of the things that I was impressed with when I went, the gentleman that we was speaking about, he basically explained how he appreciated the patients and the process of going through this process. And he looked better. He looked like he was happy. He looked like he had purpose. And it made me feel good to see that, and so much so that I've been sharing that with other mayors. And Mayor Kyle Palmer up in Silverton is going to hopefully come to the next session and bring his judge with him. Because he couldn't believe that something like this existed. So I was extolling the virtues of our Lynn County Mental Health, working with our court to them. And he was like, we've never heard of that before. So I'm excited about other judges, other mayors and judges being interested in working a model like ours. So thank you very much, Judge Reed. And I'll, Counselor Novak has something for you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. It's so encouraging to hear a report like that. It just really does my heart good. So thank you. I'm, I'm really glad to end the first meeting of the year on such an encouraging note. Just thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, a year or two ago, we had the police department and Chance were working together where when they stopped someone who might be having not, not really a criminal, but having mental health problems to where they, they, Chance would help them be directed to the right place. Do we still do that?
I have not heard anything about that. I, I remember that, Counselor, and I haven't heard any follow-up about that. September, do you know the answer to that?
I'm not sure. I've, I've heard anything about Chance. I know that they have a Lynn County Mental Health rep that works with the police officers and goes out. If they have somebody that they think they need assistance with, and we'll hear back from them too if they think, if an officer has an individual that they think would be good for mental health court or the mental health agent that the officers work with. If they have somebody that the police had contact with the night before, they'll let us know. So, but I don't know if it's somebody from Chance. I haven't heard, heard that.
Thank you, September. Counselor, excuse me, city manager, you had something before I give Counselor Bartholomew?
Just to say that APD does work closely with Lynn County Mental Health. And that the person that, and I can't remember her name right now, but she's, she has an exhaustive knowledge of the resources that are available, including Chance. So yes, APD does still work with them.
Thank you, Peter. And Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes, I, I have extensive knowledge of this process because our organization is, has started an outreach program which has coordinated with Chance, Albany Police Department and CSC and an organization, an outreach organization in Lebanon. And so each of those organizations is coordinating and referring persons. And I'm really grateful to hear Mr. Reed about the court system. So that, that is also something that we can incorporate into our coordination. And I'm really grateful to Kirsten Glaser, who's the crisis liaison at the APD from Lynn County Mental Health. And so just letting you know that that's happening and I'm very excited about it. And it's called COAT.
Does anyone else have anything for the judge? I told Judge, I'm, I'm telling the, Counselor Novak, your hand's still up.
I apologize. I don't know why that's so hard to remember.
That's okay. Well, anyone, everyone, thank you very much, Judge. And again, a happy new year and I hope you have a memorable prison with your family.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselor. You folks are always welcome to stop by anytime, whether we're in a, just a regular session or mental health court. And I'm always available to answer any questions. Thank you for your support. Goodbye.
Good evening. So next up is business from the council. First up on my screen is Counselor Olson.
Oh, yes. One of my constituents told me that the charging station behind the old penny store is not working. And are we responsible for that? Or if we aren't, can anybody tell me who is?
Counselor Olson, that would be Pacific Power. But I'll, I'll find out the details about that and if there's an estimated time of repair.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, and along those lines, I heard a, an item on public broadcasting about the, trying to get trucks and heavier vehicles like buses on, on roads with operating electricity. And they were talking about taking an electric bus from Eugene to Seattle. And they said that there'd be a three-hour stopover in Portland to recharge the batteries. And I thought, well, maybe I'll take the train or maybe I just won't go. I think electric buses have a ways to go.
Well, thank you, Counselor Olson. I don't know if I want a three-hour layover in Portland.
Portland's an interesting place, but the three hours is more than I want to spend.
Hours, yeah. Go to, go to the bookstore, Powell's Books.
How close to the bus station is it? Or do we have a bus station in Portland?
Probably about eight or ten blocks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Johnson, you're next up.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel, Counselor Novak.
Thank you, sir. I think I have said enough this evening.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kupczynski?
I do have something, but it'll be an add-on to what Peter's going to be talking about at his session.
The what?
I do have something, but it will be kind of tangential to what Peter's going to be bringing up as part of his discussion.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bartholomew?
Um, yes, I am very excited because I, I wanted to thank the Albany Police Department. And we put out the, the new organization, COAT, Community Outreach Assistance Team, that I talked about just prior. Albany Police Department was contacted and they put out the word and put, started a COAT drive for the organization to help people who were out and about, unhoused, to have dry clothing. And it was an incredible response. Within one day, we had twenty-five COATs. And within two weeks, we had ninety. So I just wanted to share my intense gratitude that, and for this community and for the Albany Police Department and what they do.
Can COATs still be turned in someplace?
Yeah. The, the police department is still receiving COATs and it's in their entryway. There's a big box.
Okay, I've got to clean the closet out. Cool.
Do they have the ability to repair COATs? I have a fairly nice COAT that the zipper is shot. So would they like to have that or?
We, we don't have that ability, but you're welcome to recycle those.
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. And I think that would leave it to me. Well, I just want to thank everyone for a positive and productive two thousand and twenty-one. You know, my, our world has changed a great deal and since the beginning of two thousand and twenty-one. But going to two thousand and twenty-two, we are going to look up at things and look forward to things and grow and be productive with each other, be better together and really embrace the new year and make things happen for the betterment of our city and relationships in our community and fellowship and just make two thousand and twenty-two a way better year than two thousand and twenty-one. So I think, I'm thankful for all of you. I thank for the staff, the judge, city manager, city attorney. And it's an honor to serve with you. Then with that, Counsel Johnson, do you have something?
Yeah, I did. We have our training session or whatever on Saturday. And I was just wondering, are we really going to have it in person?
That was the intent.
That's it, yeah. Because I'm not sure if I feel comfortable doing that. So I'm hoping that there's Zoom available because I'm sick right now and I thought, I don't want to, I, I just don't want to chance it. So maybe we can talk about it Wednesday. Mary's asking for our lunch orders and so, you know, that's the most important thing. Can I have it delivered?
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Are there any empty beds in the Albany Hospital? I, I know a friend of mine, we just had a funeral for him and it wasn't COVID. He died in the Lebanon Hospital because there was no room in the end at the Albany Hospital in Christmas time.
Anecdotally, Counselor Olson, I've heard of delays in accepting people who the fire department has delivered. So they are definitely up against a limit. I don't know what those numbers are, but like I say, that's anecdotal.
Well, I'm asking that in continuation. Best you set a question about whether we have to be.
In answer to Counselor Johnson's question, we, you know, we have a Plan B and a Plan C. And if we need to go to a hybrid format or a virtual format, we'll do that. It's, it's less than ideal, but your, your health and your safety is important. So we'll, we'll have more on Wednesday night if that becomes necessary.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith? Counselor Johnson, your hands still up?
My only comment was the same as, as Counselor Johnson's. I have the same concerns.
And I too, with the people I work with in my profession. So just so you know where I'm coming from this, I lost eighty-one people last year through death and fifteen to COVID. So I do not want to be an epicenter for a COVID outbreak in my population, people I serve. So we may need to look at alternative meeting strategy for Saturday. So something, let's talk about it Wednesday night. Is everybody comfortable with that? Thank you. City manager's report?
Yes, Sir Mayor, thank you. What Counselor Kupczynski was referring to has to do with the Planning Commission. And council policy, and I, I stress that its council policy requires that each councillor appoint, make their appointments from within their ward. Now, this, this is not an ORS requirement. It is a council requirement and it's been in effect since about nineteen ninety-five. So there's current, currently a vacancy that is proving very difficult to fill. And so the reason I bring this to the council's attention is because the council will have to decide between, on the one hand, potentially waiving this, this policy for appointment from within the ward or accepting a long-term vacancy on that seat. You know, the work of the Planning Commission is very important. And you can make a real case for the validity and the importance of appointing from within a ward. But we also need to have a quorum and we also need to have the city well represented. So I, I tee that up for the council. If you'd like to have any discussion or if you have any direction for us, we can, we can come back with it. But there's really, it's, there's really not a whole lot of research or preparation there. I've just laid out a problem for you. And you have a, essentially a choice between how you'd like to go about addressing that. And Mayor, I've thrown that in front of you, you know, at the, at the last minute.
Counsel.
Need to have a, a debate right now. We can pick this up on Wednesday if need.
Counselor Smith?
Well, I just wanted to say that when the council adopted changes to a new policy a couple of years ago that granted That granted more authority to the counselors to make appointments, um taking uh a lot of those appointments away from the mayor. Uh, the policies, that general policy says that the council should make every effort to. Uh, or language like that to appoint from their wards, but it doesn't say that you have to. If you can't find somebody and you've knocked on every door. But you have other willing parties in other parts of town, that certainly advise, uh, well, you're welcome to do that. In, in the ca, in my case, for refilling um appointments uh for boards and commissions coming up this year. I have appointed on uh two or three people who are outside Ward Three, who were incumbents. Uh, appointed by other people who have applied for reappointment. Um, I did that because of their experience and. Um, they're, they're filling in for people who are um, who are no longer uh going to serve. And I believe it's important to have that kind of continuity. Um, and I couldn't find um appropriate people in my ward. But mostly I could, so um I, I don't see that the Planning Commission is any different from that. I do really firmly believe that we need to have broad, broad representation of the whole community, if possible. But it's not always possible.
So my internet is terrible, so I missed a lot of that, Counselor Smith, um, Counselor Bartholomew, and then Counselor Novak.
I, I just had a question of, is it, have there been extensive vacancies so far? In our planning commission, um, where we have not been able to fill vacancies? That's what I'm asking.
No, it's, it's not been a, a chronic problem. We've had a problem sometimes with the level of attendance for some people. But the council has addressed that in, in, with other means. Uh, but in this case, um, this is, this is a case of. Of it being pretty difficult to, to find somebody to fill that particular position.
We freeze up?
Is it?
Okay, Counselor Novak, then.
Yeah. Okay, um. Manager Tredson mentioned not being able to fill a quorum. My question is, if there's only one person missing. From a citizen advisory group of, you know, whatever the planning commission board, does that, does that make the quorum? Um, I would think it would take more than one vacancy to, to cause a lack of form.
It, that's, that's correct, but you can imagine that the fewer members you have, the harder it is to make.
Of course, yes, I understand that.
Yeah, it's just um, the fact that one seat is vacant doesn't automatically mean there won't be a quorum. It just makes it more of a risk, that's all.
Counselor Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Peter, can you tell, can you tell, I, when Kenzie sent out the notifications? I don't believe I had, but can, can you tell which counselors uh still need to fill? Maybe we could help each other out.
Yes, um, well, I can't, you know, I could look it up now, but it'll, it'll take a little bit, so let me, let me uh. I can get back to you on that, and certainly you can have that available for Wednesday.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's, it's not me, because I don't think I do, but uh, hey, anything can happen.
I have one left, and uh Counselor Kupczynski.
Okay, yeah, the, the rest of, the rest of the story, uh, it's my appointment, okay? We all know what happened on my first appointment attempt. Uh, so I went out and started beating the bushes, and I ended up talking to six different people. Okay, a couple of them said not only no, they said hell no. Uh, these are people I thought were imminently also qualified. Um, and so I said, well, now I'm, I'm up against the wall, so then I started. Uh, I asked Counselor Smith if she might be, well, actually sent out a letter uh uh to the Chamber of Commerce, uh email to Janet. Uh, did not get any response as far as uh, you know, qualified people. Uh, so then I went to Counselor Smith, and she uh helped and found a, a possible candidate. Uh, approached that person, and they chewed on it for a while and finally decided, uh, no, they decided not to. So then I went to Ward One and uh knew some uh person who uh was Ward One. Uh, who I uh worked with down at the Carousel was a volunteer and suggested him. And he thought about it, and he said, yes, he would like to do it. So I submitted his app, I had him submit his application. And that was when it came back and said, uh, no, he doesn't live in Ward One. So I started doing some of the research. And bringing up a couple of the items, uh, AKA what Counselor Smith brought up, uh, that the language was not really, really clear. And brought it back to uh city attorney and to uh city manager, who said that they would do some more research. Uh, Holly then got involved with it and found the state language that says it is not required. Uh, but then turns out that our requirement dated back to nineteen ninety-five. So I said, we need to get ahead on this, because I would like, that was, my goal was to have uh. My person then up on the agenda for Wednesday, uh, so that uh they could be approved in the consent agenda. We'll have to see what happens, I guess, but that's, that's the backstory.
So what you're saying is that our pers, our code is not, not our code, our process is not up to date for this particular commission?
No, we've got two, two or three different things in the charter, the code, the description of the planning commission that say different things. And so they're, they're not uh concise uh and very objective. So there, there, there's room for interpretation, as Counselor Smith mentioned. So I, that's what I was gonna fall on, I was relying on that. Inconsistency and saying, okay, if it, if it's, it's okay in one area, why can't we do it in another? I've got a good candidate, why can't we have that person on the agenda?
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Novak.
Yeah, I thought, unless I misunderstood Counselor Smith, and I know from my own experience, we do have people serving. Um, from not the ward that the counselor is in um on various commissions. So I, is it not okay then to have someone from a different ward filling this position who's maybe not in Ray's ward?
So we had, so we had some legislation that we did that is we couldn't find somebody with effort in your ward, couldn't find somebody, you can go outside. There's certain committees and boards that they have to have certain skill sets. Cannot deviate from, we have to have that role.
Okay.
In general, if a person, you can't find anybody in your ward, we, we actually did the language while I was a city councilor, that we can go outside our ward.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Uh, so this person, question, the, the person that um, that Ray has spoken with is qualified. And is not in his ward, so where's the problem if we have language saying that it's okay to take someone from a different ward? When you can't fill it from within your own ward? I'm not sure that I understand what the problem is.
That's my confusion as well. So City Manager, go ahead and go ahead and make your comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So there have been four resolutions on this subject since nineteen ninety-five, one in ninety-five. One in nineteen ninety-nine, one in two thousand and one, and one in two thousand and eight. And I'm gonna read you a letter from, uh, or not a letter, a paragraph that appears in each one of them. Each one of these resolutions that says, when a vacancy occurs, the responsible counselor shall nominate, shall nominate. A person to fill that vacancy, counselors must make the nomination from their own ward. The mayor's nominees shall be at large. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty key policy outlined in.
This, we did this in twenty nineteen, we changed that language in twenty nineteen to. If Versa couldn't find somebody in the ward, they can go outside the ward.
That was for all other boards and commissions, but you have special language for the planning commission. And again, I think that the reason that it's there is the planning commission makes land use decisions. It's very important that each ward be represented, otherwise you, you potentially have a very lopsided situation.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
So even, so the, that's kind of interesting, because as the mayor, I can appoint at large, and the ward doesn't matter. So it's gonna be three of one anyway. Go ahead, Marilyn, Counselor Smith.
Thank you. Um, you've got a point there, but if you read that, the same ordinance that says they must be from the counselor's ward. It also says that there can, there shall be no more than four from any one ward.
I read that, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. And the, and the, what we're talking about here is they must be from your ward is an ordinance rather than. A resolution, which is what we, what the council passed a couple of years ago to open it up. Um, for the, for the other boards and commissions. Yeah.
Thanks for the clarification, Counselors.
You're, you're welcome.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes, I was gonna say, I've seen it um for other cities. If we're, you know, if we have some positions that we're not filling, to put it in the newspaper. Say, you know, the city of Albany is looking for, you know, people uh to apply for the planning commission, that type of a thing. And I mean, other cities have done it, so I don't see why we couldn't do that, uh, because maybe more. More people would uh see it, because unless you know them personally, or. I mean, I don't know how many people go on the city website, but you know, uh, it, I think it'd get, be more far-reaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Novak, and I, Matthew, Communications Officer.
I've already spoken, sir, and my hand is down.
No, Matthew.
Okay.
My bad.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Okay, um, let's see, hang on here, lower my hand, all right? So basically, I guess the opportunity then is to modify the ordinance, or what another resolution would not override the ordinance. The ordinance takes priority over a resolution, so we would have to modify the existing ordinance or come up with a brand new one. To allow this uh particular happening.
Well, you would. Uh, if, if it's the ordinance, if we're going to amend the ordinance, we'd have to amend that with another ordinance, counselor. Um, a resolution, we, we wouldn't be appropriate to amend an ordinance with a resolution. We'd have to create, you know, create or amend that ordinance to allow for the, the if or whenever possible language to put in there. If that's what council chooses to do, which they, they have the ability to do that. Uh, state law, like, like we were saying, state law does not require each member to be from, or them to be from specific ward. So if, if we want to put that, whenever possible, language in the ordinance, we could do that.
Yeah, I will hold my uh candidate uh uh in the background until we get this decided, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, I'm assuming, uh, Communications Officer Matthew Harrington.
Hey, um, so I just wanted to provide a little context to what um Bessie uh said about putting. Um, an advertisement in the newspaper. So for years, actually, that was a standard practice um of our recruitment process. And uh, I believe, gosh, I want to say it was about four or five years ago. Um, we also started in our um electronic uh application process. And we started tracking where people had heard about the opening um on the board and commission. And during that year, uh, we also, was the last year that we put an ad in the newspaper. Um, one person indicated, out of all the people that applied that year, that they had seen it in the newspaper. Um, and with a four thousand dollar bill for the ad run. We decided it was not worth the time uh and the, the effort to put in. Uh, conversely.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Public ser, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, it's not free, sorry. We get a discounted rate, but it's considered a display ad nonetheless, so.
Wow.
Um, yeah, we, we actually did a little experiment that same year with um boosting a Facebook post. Um, which is essentially an ad on, on Facebook, and I think Holly was in charge of it at that point. And I want to say she put twenty dollars toward it, and uh the amount of people that said they heard about it. Um, from that ad or from Facebook was, uh, it was in the double digits, that's all I know. So that compared to four thousand dollars for one person was a no-brainer.
Or I, yeah, return on investment.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. So we're trying to, City Manager, you completed your report?
No, I have uh one other thing, but if you, you know, if, if the council has a sense of which direction they will go, then the. City Attorney and I will work on a way to, to, to get there, and that's only, you know, that's only important if you want to uh make it. Consistent with the other boards and commissions that you could appoint from outside the ward. Um, so if, if that's the, if that's, I see you all uh various degrees of, of uh acknowledgement. But we can, we can move in that direction and come back.
Counselor Novak, go ahead, your thought, and I'll.
Thank you, sir, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, so um, we're looking at potentially amending the ordinance. So that it makes it okay to put someone from a different ward on the planning commission when you can't find someone from your own ward. Is that what we're asking here?
That's what I understand, Counselor Novak. Uh, Counselor Smith mentioned the, the wording that appears elsewhere about whenever possible, councils will. From within their ward.
And, and we could, we could make that change and keep the part about no more than four people from a certain ward. Because I think that is important.
It's very important, thank you for that. Okay, thank you, Counselor Novak, put your hand down, please. Um, next, uh, so City Manager, is there anything else?
Yes, I was just gonna assure you that uh we understand your concern about Saturday, and I'll come back with uh. Options on Wednesday. I would ask you that if it came to a choice between doing this virtually. Or delaying the workshop, uh, if there's a sense of preference, one way or the other. Anybody have any strong feelings? I personally would like to get it done as, as soon as we can, because we're hoping to have it. Help us inform our budget build, and uh, of course, delays, um, well, we, we don't like delays. But um, I'm open to any of your suggestions.
Okay, sooner than later.
Sooner than later for me as well. Counselor Kupczynski, you got your hand up?
Um, I already turned in my uh lunch request.
Yeah, me too, turned it in, was hoping to meet in person.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Later, um, personally.
Okay. All right, and then I would uh call your attention to the uh, the uh. List of references that I sent out to you today. Um, and again, I wanted to reiterate to you that is, there's no expectation that you read that. By, all of that by Saturday, but um, it gives you a, a good sense of how much planning effort, planning work has gone on before. And will continue to go on afterwards, and it provides uh some good references, reference material for your uh, for your knowledge. If you want to look into anything in particular. And uh.
With that. You done?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much.
With that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for this first meeting of twenty twenty-two. We're all, we're all here, we're all healthy, we're all happy, so good to have you again, and have a good evening.